Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, April 3, 2023 at 7:00 PM. And tonight, we have with us Scout Troop 71 from Athens. And they're going to be with us tonight to lead us in the pledge at the beginning of the meeting. And then they'll also be staying through the discussion of the single-use bag ordinance. So if everybody could please rise, we will have the scouts lead us in the pledge. My pledge.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now start the business meeting. Our first item of business is to establish the quorum, and all members of council are here. Next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session of council held on March 20, and then the special session held March 27. If I could have a motion for approving these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We now have communications. I do have one that I'm going to repeat that I had brought up several weeks ago. This is from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, and these are for new permits for Kroger Company, who will be moving some of their liquor operations from the store proper to what was the GameStop in the same parking lot in the same area as Kroger's. And so if there are no objections from council, then our clerk of council will be going ahead and turning that form into the Division of Liquor Control. Okay, thank you. Are there communications from other council members? Councilmember McCary?
Thank you, President Nisley. I am pleased to report that the mayor and diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility coordinator for the city recently returned from the National League of Cities Reel Institute, Reel standing for racial equity and leadership. That was held March 28 through 31 in DC. The objectives included to support cohort participants and learning from their peers. We were among about a dozen teams from across the nation, and we engaged in a multi-day learning experience designed to help us create spaces for cohort participants to learn from one another's challenges that we face in our municipalities and to share resources for overcoming those challenges. It was a positive experience. Not enough time yet to conduct a full report, but I plan to follow up later.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to announce that the Environment and Sustainability Commission will be meeting in this building on the first floor on Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM. I would also like to announce that we have a member who is stepping down from the commission. Her term has ended, and we enthusiastically asked her to return, but for personal reasons, she declined that invitation. This is Jasmine Facoon, and she's done a wonderful job in the commission. And so that means we do have an opening. There's one opening for a non-city resident on the Environment and Sustainability Commission. You may contact the city council for more information about how to apply. Thank you.
Okay. And your mention of commissions makes me remember that we are having an all-commissions meeting tomorrow night. And if you have not RSVP, that meeting is open to the public, but we're specifically inviting all of our different commission members. We have some 19 commissions, and we've invited them all to get together for some discussion. And that's at the community center at 5:30 PM to 6:30. Any other communications from council members? Communications from other elected officials, and then from the law director. And I don't believe the auditor is here, so Mayor Patterson?
I just had a couple items tonight, President Nisley. Number one, starting on the 10th of April, is the Athens International Film and Video Festival. And with that, as council is aware, that Court Street will be closed for a short period of time for the first screening. When I say first, the first time a screening has taken place on Court Street, which will be at 9:00 PM on April 15. And it will be a wildly popular anime night program. So I encourage, number one, people to know that Court Street will be closed for a period of time, but number two, to partake in the Athens International Film and Video Festival. The other item that I have, something that also came out of the training that council member McCary and I went through, and still encouraging council to think about putting together a land acknowledgement and opening city council meetings, or at least a meeting, to acknowledge the fact that we live and reside on lands that belonged to the Wyandotte, the Shawnee, the Iroquois, and other indigenous peoples before it was colonized in the name of Ohio University and the City of Athens, or the encampment of Athens, if you will. But again, encourage council to think about structuring a land acknowledgement to at least give recognition to the lands in which we all are living.
Thank you. Okay. All right. We'll move on now to ordinances for third reading. We have two tonight. The first one being 2623, an ordinance authorizing a contract with the Washington County Commissioners and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Nisley. I would like to move that we adopt ordinance 2623.
Second.
Excellent. This has been reviewed and read three times. It's not an unusual contract. Rather, it's an annual agreement that the City of Athens partakes in. Section 1 reads, "The service safety director is hereby authorized to enter into a one-year contract from April 1, 2023, through March 31, 2024, with the Washington County Commissioners for the Housing of Prisoners in accordance with the contract attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference." Section 2, "This ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the City of Athens, Ohio, in order to provide adequate space for the housing of prisoners, and that it shall be in full force and effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor." This is not a service that we have utilized frequently, not at all, even in its last year of contract, but we do need this as a resource available to us, and I'd encourage everyone to support this.
Yeah, thank you. Any comments or questions from council members? Other elected officials? Or our audience? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2923 is an ordinance rejecting all bids received for municipal refuse, recycling, and optional composting, and is introduced by all members of council. I'll give a little bit of background information, and then request that a council, one of the council members make a motion and second. This rejection of the bids, and then we will eventually be going out to bid again, was based on an opinion that we requested from our city law director. And seeing that the terms of what we were requesting in the bid were not met by either of the groups that submitted the bids, then we have decided to reject them, and we will be starting somewhat over again. So this is on behalf of all council members, so if one of the council members is inclined to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. Do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Swank?
Should council vote in the affirmative on this and thereby nullify the two bids that have been submitted? Couple of procedural questions to start the process over. Will we go to committee first, which would be next week possibly? Or can we go to first reading should an acceptable ordinance be drafted to bring to council?
I believe that the appropriate way to handle this would be a committee meeting first. I think that Director Stone would like to discuss it with council. The ordinance would ask for lowest and best bids, and I think that he would like to have that opportunity to discuss it.
If we were to do that, President Nisley, would we continue the current path of treating this as a committee of the whole, or would this come from city and safety services?
I think the last renewal came from committee of the whole, so this would come again through committee of the whole.
And to do that, would a council member make that request to you, or would that come from you as to when it would be placed on the agenda?
I would work with council and administration to find the best time, you know, to get that forward.
Because what I'm getting at here is the clock is ticking. We are in April. And according to the law director's opinion, one of the options is if we cannot get this wrapped up in an acceptable time period by which if we decided to make a change, that it would not be able to be implemented by July 1, the end of this contract, and therefore would necessitate an extension for a limited period of time with the existing vendor, which would also probably necessitate a negotiation involving fees. So I guess what I'm saying is, in the interest of time and possibly minimizing any disruption or additional action by council and administration, I would hope that we could seriously consider having this placed on the agenda for our next committee meeting, if at all possible.
We'll have discussions with city administration to see if that's a possibility to, and we'll have to make a decision by Wednesday, whether to get it or Thursday, to get it on the agenda in time. Thanks for the comments. Any other comments or questions? Any questions from our audience? If not, we have the motion and second, and now the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have some ordinances for second reading, the first one of which is 2523, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 11 Business Regulations to add Chapter 11.13, Reduction of Single-Use Plastic Bags. And this is introduced by councilmember Swank.
Thank you. In the continuing discussion and saga of the single-use plastic ban ordinance, we have three possible amendments this evening. I asked this two weeks ago, and I will ask again. Can we treat these as one, or do we need to treat them as three separate ordinances, three separate amendments as they affect three separate sections of the proposed ordinance?
I believe you could treat them as one.
Fantastic. All righty. After much discussion amongst council and members of the community, particularly the business community, the first amendment would affect Section 11.13.02A, and that would be changing the effective date from August 1, 2023, to January 1, 2024. The second amendment amended part of this would again be Section 11 dot 13 dot 02, an additional section, Section D, which would deal with enforcement. Citations for violations of the section shall be issued to a store or vendor, thank you, Member Grace, by code enforcement officers, police officers, sanitarian, litter control officer, and others assigned by the service safety director. And then finally, the other addition is near the end of the ordinance, and it has to do with penalty, and that is Section 11 dash 13 dot 04. A violation of Section 11 dot 13 dot 02 shall be an administrative offense, requiring a fine of $150. Any store or vendor cited with an offense of this section who does not pay the required administrative fine within 30 days shall receive a minor misdemeanor citation into court. Any store or vendor cited with an offense of this section who wishes to appeal the violation shall visit the Athens Police Department and receive a minor misdemeanor citation into court, providing notice and an opportunity to be heard, which shall serve as an appeals process. Any store or vendor who persists in such violation after previously receiving an administrative citation shall be guilty of a minor misdemeanor. I would like to move that we amend this ordinance to include three-sided passages. And is there another one?
There's one more sentence.
One more sentence. A separate offense shall be deemed committed each day during or on which a violation of noncompliance occurs or continues. I would like to move that we amend this ordinance per the three citations that I've described, and if there is a second, I will speak briefly to the enforcement process.
Second.
On Thursday, I had the, or maybe it was Friday, I can't remember which, Thursday or Friday, had the opportunity to spend considerable time with Mr. Stone, Andy Stone, discussing this. We both happened to be at Athens Middle School Track Meet, and events were running rather slowly, being the first meet of the year. He explained in great detail how the administration had shaped this verbiage. This is verbiage that came from the administration, I would assume. The law director has also weighed in on this. And he thought that this would give the administration flexibility in enforcing this, and at the same time, put teeth in the ordinance. We both agree that we really don't think enforcement is going to be a big issue, based on what we have heard from other cities. People in Athens, knowing this is coming, have already begun to get on board. And as you go around and check various businesses in town, more and more are already putting up signs, encouraging people to bring their own reusable bags, and in some cases, have already made the transition from single-use plastic bags to paper bags. So this penalty section 11 dash 13 dash 04, as the administration requested, has been crafted over the last month. And based on my conversations with Director Stone, I think they've done a very, very good job of this, which will give them the power to put a little teeth in this if needed.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and second for amending, with the three sections of language that councilmember Swank has described. Do we have any comments or questions from council members first? Councilmembers, if.
Thank you, President Nisley. I just wanted to express my appreciation of the changing of the penalty from going directly to a minor misdemeanor to being an administrative fine first with the option to do that. So I appreciate the changing of that. Thank you.
Any other comments from our council members? Mayor Patterson?
Nope.
All right. And so I know the scouts may, I'm not sure if any scouts have any questions or want to make any comments. I know that they're working on this particular ordinance for a merit badge and taking a look at it. So what we're doing tonight is, we've got the motion and second now for amending this ordinance, to change it slightly with a later effective date, and also how we're going to enforce it and the fines that we're going to enforce. And once we vote on this amendment tonight, it's considered read for the first time. So it will not become final tonight, but it'll go through its three readings, and tonight being the first one, once it's amended, because it's as if it's a new ordinance. Are there any scouts that want to make any comments or ask any questions? Okay, Leo, do you want to come on up and come on up to the podium? And what we ask of everybody that speaks is, we ask them to give us your name and address, and if you're representing a group.
My name is Leo Mollenkamp. I live on 13 Utah Place, and I'm just ripping myself. I should probably also write that on this page here.
Sure, that would be a help, yeah.
So one of the things I noticed is that I've done volunteer work at the Athens County Food Pantry, and they use plastic bags for some of their, like, collecting the food and placing it. The main bags are paper, but for me, it's such these plastic bags. And would, and how, if so, how would this ordinance affect something of that type?
Councilmember Swank, would you like to address that?
Yes, I'd be glad to, for several reasons. Number one, Leo, you just live six short streets away from me, so you're over in Ward 41. In another six years, you probably ought to be able to vote, so if I'm still around and running, I'll make sure I stop by your house and knock. Hey, never too early. Leo, where is exactly, because I know there are many food pantries in Athens, where exactly is?
I'm not entirely sure, but, and I don't actually know if it's in the city, and this particular pantry would be affected, but if something of that type did exist in the city, then what would happen?
Well, if it's the one at the Old County Home, which is on your way to Chancie on Route 13, on Mondays every week, my wife is there packing groceries. And in fact, today was unloading day. They have fully made the transition to they're using only boxes and only bags. I would assume they'll continue doing that, but part of this ordinance is the fact that it is a citizen-driven initiative. There is a group in Athens called Athens Rethinks Plastic. You may have seen their billboards coming into town, both from the Albany area and from Nelsonville. And one of the things that they have been doing and will continue to do is provide educational guidance for people to make that transition. So that if we have any food pantries or others that are using those things, they're going to help people make that transition. And of course, you're familiar with what's happened here since the Heisman Trophy speech in 2019. We might just be able to pick up the phone and call old Joe Burrow and have him send us some brown Bengals bags that we can put all these in that aren't plastic. But again, not to be too funny, but the point is, a lot of this is going to revolve around education, and the scouts might take this on as a project. I know to fill one of those sashes, it takes many merit badges, and I know one of those can be of an educational nature, perhaps. Mr. Perry back there, another one of our neighbors, could help craft that, and you could pick up some additional merit badges and get the word out on moving from plastic to paper, or more importantly, moving from plastic to bringing your own.
Thanks. Thanks for the comments, Leo.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, yes.
That was a very good question. And this is in regards to store or vendor, and a definition of store means any commercial establishment, including a restaurant, operating from a permanent enclosed structure that sells perishable or non-perishable goods. So it's possible that would be an exception for a food pantry, but I agree with member Swank that it would be a good opportunity for education. But great question.
Good, thank you. Okay. Do we have any other comments or questions from any of the scouts or any other audience members? Okay. If not, we have the motion and second for amending the ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance has now been read for the first time. And I think that the scouts, this is the discussion that you were here for, so if you're ready to go and to retrieve the flag, we understand, and we know you've got a scout meeting ahead of you. So thanks for being here tonight.
That was such a good question. Oh, wish I was that smart at that age.
Okay. Yeah, they're so cute.
Feel.
Sure, thank you.
Right there, yeah.
All right. We'll now move on to ordinance 3023. This is an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to accept the Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council, NOPEC, 2023 Energize Community Grant Funds, introduced by councilmember Crowell. And if we don't have any comments or questions, or any amendments, then we will move on to the next one. 3123 is an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522, introduced by councilmember Crowell. And if no comments or questions, we will move on to 3323. This is an ordinance granting a special right-of-way use permit at 758 West Union Street to Seven Generations LLC owner to place a new sign face on an existing pole, introduced by councilmember Grace. Yes, councilmember Grace.
I just want to take this opportunity to remind the administration that we are hoping for an answer on the comparative sizes of the signs, so.
And I have an answer for you.
Excellent, thank you.
And that being that the signs are of the same size.
Excellent.
So there's no change in the dimensions of that particular.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Good, thank you. 3523 is an ordinance authorizing municipal parking facility improvements, Phase 3, introduced by councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend 3523.
Second.
Thank you, member Crowell. In addition to this ordinance being an authorization, it also needs to be an appropriation. So there's an amendment into the ordinance, a section 2, that goes, "The 2023 Appropriation Ordinance is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $500,000 to Parking Garage Fund 730, transaction code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by set amount." So.
Okay. So we have a motion for amending this to insert the word "and appropriation." Is there any discussion, or do people have any questions? Councilmembers, Bellas.
Just a quick thing. We talked about adding bicycle areas, and as long as we're amending, and it says rooftop solar and these other things, couldn't we add that too? I really want some assurance that that's going to happen.
You have a motion and second. I think parliamentary-wise, do they need to see if the persons who made the motion and second would amend that to include that language? So councilmember Reisner, and then who seconded?
That was Crowell, member Crowell.
Crowell, yeah. Are you amenable to that? Do you have language for it, councilmember Bellas?
I didn't specifically write it down, no. I guess I should have. I think it was, I should have. I think it was, I should ask our member here, who's the bicycle expert.
Oh, Mayor Patterson has a comment.
Yeah.
We have the language from Mr. Delak that we can easily translate into something that fits within an ordinance when it comes to providing bicycle, properly placed bicycle racks, parking, if you will.
That would be, thank you. That would be wonderful.
So my question is, is if you're amending tonight, you're taking it back to the first reading. If you bring that language to us later, you are amending again and coming back for the, for a first reading.
We have the language ready to implement and we were going to use it anyway from an administrative standpoint to include the parking, the bicycle parking within the parking garage, based upon the guidelines that Mr. Delak had provided to us. But if you want that language to include, it might be just a simple line that states in there, you know, "And the inclusion of bicycle parking spaces within the parking garage."
That sounds good. Let's do that.
So in that first whereas, improvements are to include rooftop solar pay kiosks with entry-exit arms, comma, bicycle, how did you put it? Bicycle?
Parking spaces.
Right. Bicycle parking spaces, comma, and level two bay of EV chargers. Okay, so we're inserting that phrase.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Is that acceptable to both of you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, all right. Any other discussion or comment? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries. The ordinance has been amended and read for the first time. Thank you for working out a solution tonight so I didn't have to return again. 3623. The next ordinance is an ordinance authorizing participation of the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. Make a motion that we amend 3623.
Second.
The reason for the amendment was there was a confusion about the, well, let me just read it. Section seven, the City of Athens acknowledged that should it wish to rescind this participation agreement, it will do so by written emailed request no later than, and I believe the original language said April 30. ODOT says no. It's May 1, 2023. So the amended version would say no later than Monday, May 1, 2023 by 5:00 p.m.
Okay.
And everything else remains the same.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion in second for an amendment of the date from April 30 to May 1. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor signify, oh, yeah, Councilmember Grace.
Just looking at the calendar, if this goes back to first read, then it will be adopted on May 1?
It's going to have to be adopted April 17th, so we'll have to suspend.
So we'll suspend. Okay. That's what, that's what I was wondering about. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is amended and read for the first time. We now have ordinances for first reading. 3723 is an ordinance accepting a land donation and easement from the Sheltering Arms Hospital Foundation, Inc., nonprofit corporation, for the West Union Street Improvements Project Number 322, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. No amendment on this one. We're introducing it for the first time. So allow me to read it. An ordinance accepting a land donation and easement from the Sheltering Arms Hospital Foundation Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation for the West Union Street Improvement Project Number 322. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section one, the City of Athens does hereby accept a donation from the Sheltering Arms Hospital Foundation Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation of land and easement. More fully described in the quitclaim deed, easement, legal descriptions, and plat attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference as part of the West Union Street Improvement Project Number 322. Section two, the City of Athens expresses its appreciation to the Sheltering Arms Hospital Foundation Incorporated for the generous gift. Section three, the Corps of Counsel hereby directed to present a certified copy of this ordinance to the Sheltering Arms Hospital Foundation. The attachments are on our disk drive. They run for about 15 pages. You can read them at your leisure, but the ordinance has been read for the first time.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, the next one is 3823. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor or their designee to enter into agreements with an electricity generation provider and new pricing for a term not to exceed three years and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. This is how the city procures, purchases its electricity for its city properties, and I'll go ahead and read this ordinance. Whereas, the city would like to renew 78 City of Athens accounts with an electricity generator as part of the SOPEC Public Pricing Program. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Athens, Ohio. Section one, the mayor or their designee is hereby authorized to enter into agreements with an electricity generation provider and new pricing as recommended by SOPEC when the market is most advantageous for a term not to exceed three years. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need to suspend that?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 3823.
Second.
Thank you. The reason being is that this is necessary in order to lock in this price as soon as possible, and perhaps the mayor would like to comment?
I would. You know, the aggregation market is constantly flexing up and down and time's of the essence when it comes to locking in at this rate because they are anticipating in the not-too-distant future that things will start cycling back up again. So capturing the best rate possible, I believe, warrants suspending the rules and passing this tonight.
Okay. We have a motion in second to suspend the rules. And I don't think there's any.
No, I don't.
Yeah. Okay, you're ready. Okay. There's no discussion. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended, Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 3823.
Second.
Yes.
And any other discussion or, yes, Councilmember Swank?
I talked with the folks at SOPEC today and right now, there are three options, 10 months, 22 months, and 34 months. And to give you an idea of pricing, as of 3/28, which was Thursday, we're looking at 6.46 cents per kilowatt hour for 10 months, 6.51 cents per kilowatt hour for 22 months, and 6.78 cents per kilowatt hour if we go 34 months. And certainly, the administration, I'm sure, will negotiate the best of those for us. But to give you an idea what that translates into home energy, for every penny, for every penny difference, for the average home using 1,000 kilowatt hours a month, that's $120 a year. For every penny difference, that's $120 a year. The reason I say that, the residential part of this is coming down the road. Right now, the SOPEC rate is 5.84 cents for residential, which the vast majority of people in Athens are participating in. So any money, to the mayor's point, penny, half a penny, quarter penny, when you think about all the energy that the city uses, adds up to a lot of money. So yes, suspending the rules tonight and moving on this quickly is very, very important before these rates go up, you know, even one Abraham Lincoln.
Yeah, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. 3823 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor or their designee to enter into an agreement. Nope, sorry, that was that. I put all my notes above it. 3923 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to pay the 2023 membership fee for the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, known as ORCA, to provide financial support from the city's transient guest tax for the Bailey's Run Trail System, along with other recreational activities. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. This is the city's support, which we have been a supporter of the Bailey's Trail System since its inception and of the organizing organization, ORCA, as in the title. And I'll go ahead and read section one. The mayor is hereby authorized to pay the 2023 membership fee to the Outdoor Recreation Council of Appalachia, ORCA, a council of governments, for funding the Bailey's Trail System, along with other recreational activities, in the amount of $90,000 from the city's transient guest tax paid into the general fund, provided that the proceeds of such tax are sufficient, legally available, and lawfully appropriated for the purpose. Said authorization shall be contingent upon the same level of financial support by the county of Athens. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Swank?
Just a quick question, and I don't remember if I heard this correctly or not, but at the last meeting, have we appropriated this $90,000? Was that in the original budget?
I believe it was. Yes.
We have.
Okay, good. So we don't have to do that. Great. Thank you.
The next ordinance is, oh, sorry, Councilmember Spillness.
Yeah, I am, I'm a little bit concerned about this, honestly. And the reason is that it was clear that the, to me, anyway, that the setting of benchmarks and progress towards goals is not really very clear. So I'm comfortable at this point of saying, yes, I will approve it this year, but only contingent upon that they really do set benchmarks and show what progress they've made towards goals. Otherwise, I'm just uncomfortable about where we're going with this.
Okay. I do believe we did have a progress report from the director.
Yes, and what was clear was that there not, there aren't very many of them. I mean, you know, how many people actually use it was done for one year and it was clear that they're not continuing to do that. So I'm not really comfortable with how we're, where our money is going and how it's going to be, how it's going to work long-term.
So you would like clearer benchmarks, which we have done with the Economic Development Council and renewal of the membership on that.
Absolutely.
We have said that we wanted, you know, additional detail, so that's fair enough. Councilmember Swank?
To take that a step further, you just jogged my memory on something. One thing that we asked last week was a copy of that study from the Voinovich Center that cited some of these things. Has anyone received a copy of that yet? I know I haven't.
We haven't, but we have been follow-up.
We can get that before the second reading. That would be great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Delak.
I'm Rob Delak, live on Morris Avenue here in the city. I just want to comment on the requirement for some kind of additional metrics. Should keep in mind that the study that was done by Voinovich School, I don't know the exact cost, but I used to work for Voinovich and worked on an economic study, similar, similar study, and I think it was $100,000 was the cost for that study. This one may not have cost quite that much, but it's an expensive thing to do that, especially if you do it on an annual basis. And I think it sort of negates the fact that we're donating or we're providing a membership fee to ORCA to help with operational costs if we then require them to do a study every year that costs a lot of money. So just keep that in mind, that if the metrics are added to this, they should be relatively easy to acquire. For example, they have counters out on the trails, and so they can count users in that respect. And that may be enough of a metric without going into economic details and surveys and other things that get at the full ramifications of the economic investment. So something that's at least attainable and not going to be expensive to do would be important.
And I don't think we were asking for another study.
Yeah.
We're just asking for some additional detail.
Right.
But thank you for clarifying.
But that is important comment, so I absolutely agree.
Okay, any other comments? All right. We'll move on to ordinance 4023, an ordinance amending the 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 15522. This is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. I'll go ahead and read section one. The 2023 Appropriation Ordinance 155-22 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $15,000 to the general fund, other administrative, as part of a three-year commitment to assist with funding a new city-county health department position for age-friendly Athens County and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. The Age Friendly Athens County Initiative is being led by the City-County Health Department and includes a few dozen local volunteers to make our Athens County a friendlier and more workable community for all ages, but in particular, those in retirement. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to ordinance 4123. This is an ordinance amending section five, Retirement of Ordinance 14822, the 2023 Fringe Benefits Package for a non-union personnel within the City of Athens, introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
Thank you, President Isley. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance and then the pertinent section that will be changed in the fringe benefits, fringe benefits package. And this is again for non-union personnel, specifically in the Athens Police Department. Section one, section five of the fringe benefit package, Retirement, included in ordinance 148-22, is hereby amended to read as attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. And the language which is being proposed to include in the non-union is that an employee who honorably retires from active duty may purchase their service handgun from the Athens Police Department. The cost of the service weapon shall be $1. If an employee is marked off duty for a stress-related or psychological condition at the time of their retirement, they will not receive their service handgun unless, within 90 days of the employee's retirement, the employee provides the Athens City Police Department and the City Human Resources Director with a statement from a psychiatrist or licensed psychologist that the employee is competent to receive their service handgun. If such a statement is provided within 90 days of the employee's retirement, the employee shall be given the opportunity to purchase their service handgun. The word retirement, as used in this section, shall mean receiving a pension from the state pension system upon separation from the city. Now, two members that are non-union members in the Athens Police Department are the chief of police and the captain. They are not members of the union. So this clause that I just read is already part of the union contract. So all Athens Police Departments have this as a fringe benefit in their negotiated contract. But it was not included in the non-union, which includes the chief of police and the captain. So to make the Athens Police Department whole in terms of what the staff members are able to have in their retirement, this clause was, is being proposed to be inserted into the non-union contract. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions? Okay. If none, we'll move on to ordinance 4223. This is an ordinance accepting a 25-year sanitary sewer line easement from Ohio University, located in the Dairy Lane area for the City-County Sewer Expansion Project Number 317, and is introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Isley. I'll begin with section one. Athens City Council does hereby accept a 25-year sanitary sewer line easement from Ohio University for the City-County Sewer Expansion Project Number 317 to install and maintain a sewer line in the name and for the use of the City of Athens. Said agreement grants and conveys to the grantee a non-exclusive sanitary sewer easement to be used solely to install, construct, reconstruct, use, operate, maintain, repair, replace, remove, service, and improve said sanitary sewer in, on, over, under, across, through, and upon the easement area of Dairy Lane, as described in the easement attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. Sounds like we're going over the river and through the woods. But this is one of two ordinances relevant to this project 317, which has been under development for quite some time, the Dairy Lane area.
Thank you.
through, and upon the easement area of Dairy Lane, as described in the easement attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Sounds like we're going over the river and through the woods. But this is one of two ordinances relevant to this project 317, which has been under development for quite some time, the Dairy Lane area.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the next ordinance related to that, an ordinance accepting a limited sewer and water line easement from Catherine Jane Shagnow and Carrie J. Griffin, North Blackburn Road, for the City-County Sewer Expansion Project Number 317, introduced by Councilmember McCary.
Thank you, President Isley. As with the last ordinance topic, this was discussed at our committee meeting last week, and project 317 has been in under development for some time. Section one reads, "Athens City Council does hereby accept a limited sewer and water line easement from Catherine Jane Chagnot and Carrie J. Griffin, North Blackburn Road, for the City-County Sewer Expansion Project Number 317, for the construction, installation, and maintenance of a single new sewer line, and for their right to lay one water line in the future, and for this limited purpose only. Limited easement will be a permanent right-of-way and easement to erect, install, construct, remove, replace, reconstruct, maintain, operate, and use underground sewer and water lines across and over the easement area located on North Blackburn Road, as described in the easement attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference."
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, these are the ordinances for the evening, and we'll now move on to announcements and other business. We will have a committee meeting next week, and so agenda items should go to the Clerk of Council by Wednesday. Then we now have reappointments to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission. Councilmember Crowell.
Yes, thank you, President Isley. We have two members whose terms have either come to an end or are coming to an end next month, and we would like to reappoint Mr. Ed Newman and Ms. Amy Delak to the Environment and Sustainability Commission.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint them.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, for the reappointment of Ed Newman and Amy Delak. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, those reappointments have been made. Thank you. We now have, and are there any other announcements from other council members or the mayor? Yes, Mayor Patterson?
I should have brought these up in our communication, President Isley, but I do have two more to add that people should be aware of. Take Back the Night is the 6th of April, so that's this week, just to make people aware. And the others, the International Street Festival will be taking place this Saturday, and it'll be on East Union Street, but there will also be a parade that goes, starts from Baker Center, comes up Court Street, and then turns on to East Union. So just keep that in mind, one of our, actually, two very important events this week.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone wanting to make a statement? If not, what we'll be doing is going into executive session, and so what we'll do is we will, I'm drawing a blank. Do we need to do the executive session motion first, and then we'll adjourn? And then we're going?
Well, not adjourn.
We're not adjourned yet. And then we will allow, after we go, move to go into executive session, before we do that, we will allow 10 minutes for students and reporters to come on up and ask your questions as quickly as possible tonight, and, but we want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to talk and ask those questions. So if we could have a motion for executive session.
So moved, I think it needs to be the exact wording, correct?
Correct.
All right. So I'd like to move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation with all members of council, president, the mayor, the law director, and clerk of council? Nope, that's it. That's it. Yep. Second.
We have a motion and second, and the roll call vote. Councilmember Spillness?
Yes.
Member Reisner?
Aye.
Member Crowell?
Aye.
Member Swank?
Aye.
Member Grace?
Aye.
Members Ziff?
Aye.
And Member McCary?
Aye.
Okay. All right, 7:52, we'll give you to 8:02. Let's say 8:04. Okay?